Welcome to the Jews United for Justice's What's at Stake in the 2024 Montgomery County Board of Education Primary Elections. My name is Heidi, I use she/her pronouns, I live in Colesville and I'm the co-lead of the JUFJ Montgomery County Leadership Council. I'm part of the JUFJ team that is presenting this program because I believe elections matter and I want to be an informed voter. With so many concerns about our public schools, including who will be the next superintendent, protections against harassment and accountability for misconduct, the role of police in schools, faith-based discrimination, LGBTQ-inclusive reading materials and a host of other issues, it has become increasingly clear that there's so much at stake in who we elect to the Board of Education. As happens each election cycle, I find myself getting drawn in by the media's focus on the top of the ticket. And then when it's time to vote, I look at the pages and pages of candidates and I get overwhelmed. Which Board of Education members am I supposed to vote for? Which districts can I vote in? What do candidates care about? We'll be sharing resources with you during and after the call so you can research the candidates and learn about their positions on the issues that matter to you. We're going to be covering a lot of ground in this program, so just a few notes upfront. Because JUFJ is a 501(c)(3) organization, 501(c)(3) organization, excuse me, we're prohibited from directly or indirectly participating in any political campaign on behalf of or in opposition to any candidate for elective public office. This includes direct or indirect endorsements of candidates. Everything we're discussing today is nonpartisan and tailored to be shared with congregations, nonprofits and individuals who reside anywhere in Montgomery County. Please note that JUFJ has a sister organization called the JUFJ Campaign Fund that is able to do direct electoral work. You can find the link to the Campaign Fund website at the top of the JUFJ website, or you can follow up with staff after this call if you want more information. We'll be sending out copies of the slides with all of the links to various resources in a follow-up email. During the program, please put your questions in the chat to star host and we'll get them answered. If there are any acronyms or terms you don't understand, please be sure to ask for clarification. As examples, we're going to say MSPS throughout the presentation as a shorthand for Montgomery County Public Schools. And we're going to say Board of Ed as a shorthand for the Board of Education. We'll have an optional additional Q and A at the end to answer any questions we didn't get to during the program. As we get started, we want to share JUFJ's mission because it informs how we think about what's at stake in the primary. We advance economic, racial and social justice in Maryland and DC by educating and mobilizing our local Jewish communities and allies. We focus on issue-based campaigns that make real, immediate and concrete improvement in people's lives. Through these campaigns, we develop leaders, build our base, shift the consciousness of the community and alter relations of power. We work with partner organizations led by and made up of impacted people to build the collective power needed to undo systemic racism and inequity. We've worked with partners to advocate for the removal of armed law enforcement officers from schools, pass funding for social workers and mental health supports for students and to fully implement the restorative justice program. Now I'll pass it to Joe.
Good afternoon. My name is Jo Schifrin. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Bethesda in County District 1. And I am on the JUFJ Montgomery County Leadership Council and the Maryland Core Team. JUFJ strives to be guided by the sacred values of Jewish tradition and by the history of our ancestors who sought justice. These values sustain us and provide us with ethical and spiritual direction. As a Jewish organization, we are committed to achieving social, economic and racial justice for all people, although we focus our work on local governments. When it comes time for an election, we are called on not just to vote, but to vote our values. We read Rabbi Yitzhak's teaching in the Babylonian Talmud that quote, "A ruler is not to be appointed unless the community is consulted." Montgomery County needs leaders who will represent all of us and who are accountable to the whole community. That's why we vote and why we take seriously Rabbi Yitzhak's teaching that community input is essential for choosing who will lead our county. Now I'll turn it back over to Heidi to tell you why primaries matter.
When we say every vote matters at the local level, we're not exaggerating. The primaries determine who will be on the ballot in the general election. To give just two local examples, in 2022, out of a county of over a million people, Mark Elrich won the Democratic primary for the county executive by only 32 votes. That is even fewer votes than 2018 when he won the primary by 77 votes. Also in 2022, a primary election in Frederick County came down to a single vote. A few important things to know about the 2024 primary election ballot. Voters will be offered a choice of candidates for President, US Senator and US Representative. Also on the ballot are candidates for Judge of the Circuit Court and for delegates to the Republican and Democratic National Conventions. However, the focus of today's presentation is the Montgomery County Board of Education. Every voter can vote for one candidate for District 2, one for District 4 and one for the at-large position regardless of where in the county you live. The two candidates with the most votes in the primary election for each seat on the Board of Education will advance to the general election. We can't say it enough times, at the local level, every vote matters. I'm now going to pass things to David to share his story about the importance of the Board of Education in particular.
Hey David, you're muted.
Hi, my name's David Fishback. I use he/him pronouns. I live in Only and I'm a longtime JUFJ member. School boards have more power than most people have traditionally understood. The events of recent years have brought that into focus. The... Nevertheless, because school board elections are generally down-ballot and because of the dearth of reporting on public school matters, many voters do not know what candidates stand for and may not even vote at all. Indeed, in 2020, more than 100,000 Montgomery County voters who voted for President did not vote for any Board of Ed candidates. Now, over the years, a number of candidates with anti-gay and transphobic views have run for the Board of Ed. Usually they try to hide their views. As the parents of two gay children who graduated from MCPS in the late 1990s when "don't say gay" was the norm even in progressive Montgomery County, I learned that who is on the Board of Ed can determine the life trajectories of LGBTQ+ students. So, beginning in 2006, I worked to find out which candidates would promote inclusion and which would not. Discovering the latter is not always easy, which is why Metro DCP Flag, formerly Parents, Families and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, has co-sponsored candidate forums and in more recent cycles, send questionnaires to the candidates. The answers to those questionnaires this year will be included in the resources we are providing in the follow-up to this program. In addition, I have dug deeply into public records to find out if anti-LGBTQ+ candidates are trying to fly under the radar and then publicize those findings. I believe that it's helped us avoid having anti-LGBTQ+ Board of Education members. Now, there are many tough issues facing MCPS. We, the voters, get to decide who will be on the front line grappling with those issues. We have the civic responsibility to do so and to do so armed with the information we need. I will pass it to DeeDee now to give some more information about the makeup of the Board of Education and how members are elected.
Hi everyone, my name is DeeDee Jacobson. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Rockville and I'm co-chair of the Montgomery County Housing Team. We're going to spend the next few minutes going deep into the weeds of how Board of Education elections work. Please feel free to ask any questions in the chat to the host and we'll do our best to answer them. So the Board of Education has eight members, seven of whom are elected by the voters of Montgomery County to serve four-year terms with no term limits. There are five Board of Ed districts. Candidates who run for a district seat must reside in that district. However, everyone in Montgomery County can vote in all Board of Ed races, no matter where you live. This is very different from, say, county council elections where you only vote in your district. There are also two at-large members of the Board of Ed and they may reside anywhere in the county. And the eighth member of the Board of Education is the student member or the the student member of the Board of Ed or the SMOB, S-M-O-B, who's elected annually by all MCPS secondary students and serves a one-year term. The student member can vote on everything except personnel matters. Most county and state-level elections happen every four years. The Board of Ed is different because the terms are staggered with one at-large member and districts 2 and 4 up for election this year and then the other seats will be up for election in 2026 when all the other local races will be on the ballot. Another difference between Board of Ed elections and other elections, I feel like it's Passover, is that the Board of Ed is nonpartisan, which means candidates are not identified as Republican or Democrat on the ballot. This can be challenging for voters who rely on party affiliation to guide how they vote. And since these positions are nonpartisan, any registered voter can vote in the primary regardless of party, which once again is different than the other races on the ballot. This year, each incumbent Board of Ed member up for reelection has at least two challenges. Therefore, this will be a contested primary. Two of the candidates from the primary will move forward to the general election and in a few minutes we'll discuss who the candidates are and which positions they're running for. As we think about who's running for the Board of Ed, it's important to remember that while county council members earn about $150,000 a year, Board of Ed members only receive $25,000 a year. This puts serving on the Board of Ed financially out of reach for many members of our community. The low compensation paired with a challenging public role means that people who run for the Board of Ed are motivated by other factors. We believe that the significant issues facing MCPS have increased interest in who serves on the Board of Ed, which has resulted in more challenges this year. We'll discuss those issues next. In summary, in 2024, two district seats and one at-large seat are up for election and all voters in Montgomery County can vote in all three races. Now I'm going to pass the mic to staff to see if any questions have come in so far for us to answer.
Hi, my name is Laura Wallace. I use she/her pronouns and I am the Montgomery County Director for Jews United for Justice. So just two questions that I wanted to lift up and give brief answers for. One is somebody asked us to define down-ballot and basically when you are when you have your mail-in ballot, then when you have to turn the page for those additional races that aren't the president and top-of-the-ticket races, that is the down-ballot races. If you were voting in person at a voting machine, then those are the races where you have to, you know, keep clicking next to get to them. And as you've heard our team say already, those are usually the races, they get a lot less press, you don't read about it on the national news and they just require much more effort to find out about those races, which is why we're having this program today. The other question that somebody asked in one of the questionnaires that people submitted prior to the program is how does somebody get on the ballot? So it's actually a very low bar to get on the ballot. You don't have to collect signatures or anything like that. All you need to do is fill out a form with the Board of Elections saying that you are running for any particular race. And then if you're going to be raising money, then you have to go through certain legal hoops to make sure that you have a candidate committee in order to be able to raise money. And so it does mean that it actually is really, it can be very hard to win, but it's a pretty low bar to get on the ballot itself. So as we continue, if you have additional questions, if you message me directly, star host, then we'll take opportunities as we continue to go through the program to answer your questions. And meanwhile, I will turn things back over to Linda.
Waiting for the slide to change, Laura. Good afternoon. My name is Linda Bragovsky. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Poolsville, which is in County Council District 2. I'm a District 15 co-captain for our work at the state level. The Board of Education has a wide-ranging set of responsibilities. First, the Board is responsible for the high-level management of MCPS, similar to a Board of Directors for a corporation. The county executive and the county council play limited official roles, mostly focused around funding. The Board of Ed hires and supervises the superintendent, who has the day-to-day responsibility for running MCPS, similar to the role of a CEO. This role is especially important right now as the Board of Ed leads a search for a new superintendent. The previous superintendent stepped down in February in the aftermath of MCPS's mishandling of sexual harassment allegations against a formal principle. The Board of Ed does not have taxing authority to fund MCPS, but it does take the responsibility for requesting such funds from the county government. Each year it makes a formal request to the county executive, who proposes a budget to the county council. The council approves or modifies the executive's proposal. The Board of Ed and superintendent have final determination about how the funds are spent. The budget issue is important because the MCPS budget is about half of the entire Montgomery County budget. Over the last few years, MCPS has faced scrutiny about the size of the budget and how the funds are being spent. The Board of Education has the authority to make official policy for MCPS, including on matters of curriculum, including how the curriculum approaches matters of diversity, school boundaries, anti-discrimination, including protections for LGBTQ+ people and people of all ethnicities and religious faiths, school security and student safety, including how the schools will work with the police, disciplinary approaches, including restorative justice policies and practices, and mental health and other student supports. Now I'll turn things over to Carol to talk about issues in the primary election.
My name is Carol Stern and I use she/her pronouns. I live in Chevy Chase and I'm a member of the Montgomery County Leadership Council, a member of the Maryland Core Team and I'm on the JUFJ Board of Directors. We just laid out the areas of responsibility for the Board of Education and now we want to dig deeper into some specific issues that are at play at this year's election. There has been a lot of conflict in MCPS in the past year, which will affect how voters decide who to support. There's a lot to cover, not enough time to go into depth about each issue. So we'll provide links to articles for each topic in the follow-up materials. You're also welcome to send questions to the host in the chat and we'll come back to them after the formal presentation during the Q and A. The Effectiveness of Administrative Oversight. Support of school communities requires supportive working environments for educators and school staff. As we shared, staff and faculty complaints about a middle school principal that were ignored by MCPS leadership have come to light over the last year. The promotion of this staff member to an even higher position of leadership jeopardized trust in the school system. Many members of the public are looking to the Board of Ed to fix these wrongs and improve trust and transparency with the school system. Belonging and Safety for All Students. Every student and educator, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, income or other demographics, deserves to be treated with dignity and respect in the school system. And as leaders of MCPS, the Board of Ed has the power to set the tone for how students and educators are treated in schools. Here are some specific examples of how these questions are playing out right now. Anti-Semitism and Islamophobia. No student can feel safe at school when they are being targeted because of who they are, where their family or where their family comes from. Each anti-Semitic and Islamophobic incident fuels the machinery of division and fear that divides us against each other and undermines student education and safety. As Jews, we know that it is only by working together across our religious and cultural differences, as many previous generations have done, that we will be able to ensure the safety and well-being of every MCPS student. We need a Board of Ed that will directly address these challenges and build a system that respects all students. LGBTQ+ Inclusive Curriculum. MCPS has implemented an LGBTQ+ inclusive curriculum that ensures students of all orientations and gender identities see themselves represented in school materials. Some parents want to roll back this inclusive curriculum through what is colloquially referred to as the "opt-out" movement in MCPS. This has been framed by some as infringing on religious beliefs, but the courts have been clear. Reading inclusive storybooks and showing all students that they are worthy of respect does not undermine freedom of religion. The Board of Ed has an important role in creating a safe and welcoming environment for LGBTQ+ students and staff that treats them as valid and precious human beings, not as potentially dangerous and offensive merely because they exist. Now I will turn it back over to Linda.
Police in Schools. Armed police officers stationed within high schools, previously known as school resource officers, have been highly contentious. Research demonstrates that police in schools are not effective at keeping students safe and lead to more children of color and children with disabilities facing criminal penalties for ordinary childhood behavior. A few years ago, the Community Engagement Officers Program was introduced. That reduced the presence of police in the school. While not satisfactory in many respects, this was a step towards treating kids as kids rather than as criminals. However, some candidates for the Board of Education went a full reinstatement of police in schools, including middle and elementary schools. The students we organize with are clear that this would harm them and other students and they are looking for Board of Ed leadership that will not put them in harm's way. Mental Health Supports and Restorative Justice. There is a long history of inadequate mental health supports in Montgomery County schools, which was exacerbated by COVID. Although JUFJ and our partners help secure funding for social workers and mental health facilities such as wellness and MCPS secondary schools, the demand for additional mental health care continues. Similarly, data has shown that schools with fully implemented restorative justice programs have significantly lowered suspension rates, especially for Black students and students have been significantly less likely to repeat harm. However, there isn't sufficient staffing and training to successfully implement restorative justice programs across MCPS. The Board of Ed should be taking a lead on ensuring students have the care and support that they need. On the topic of mental health and related student support, I'm going to invite Mara to share her story with us.
So, my son Barack started at Northwood High School in September of 2023. It has been a long road to get him there and it feels like it's going to be even longer to get him through high school. Barack's diagnoses are his own to disclose, but I've been given permission to say that despite being as smart as can be, he struggles with the demands of the school day, with the social aspects, with the work required, especially if it involves writing. Reading, not a problem. His teachers tell me that he is reading even when he's not supposed to be. You may have heard people say that the special education system at MCPS is in trouble. Well, it's absolutely true. The special ed staff have good intentions and often good ideas, but they don't have the resources to provide what kids need. This January, JUFJ's union partners and SEIU Local 500 stated their concerns at the lack of funding for special education teachers. And since elementary school, this lack has meant that my son has gone further and further behind in skills development. The Board of Education is critical in ensuring not only that funding goes to special education, but also that it goes to the right places. For the sake of children like mine, it's vital we elect board members who reflect our values on many fronts, including the idea that all children deserve the best education we can give, even the ones who are too smart for their own good, like Barack. And now we are going to dive into who is running in each of the three Board of Education races on the 2024 ballot and I will turn it over to David.
So we aren't on Zoom all afternoon. We are only going to give a brief snapshot of each candidate and then we are going to provide you with a number of resources to do additional research. The materials we share with you after the presentation will include links to each candidate's website, links to local media news sources and links to a number of questionnaires published by groups such as the League of Women Voters and, as I mentioned before, Metro DCP Flag. All of the information we are about to share about the candidates is pulled from those public sources. For instance, much of the biographical information is directly quoted from the MOCO 360 article that we are about to put in the chat and their priorities are all pulled from their websites. As a reminder, please put questions in the chat to the host and we will do our best to answer them in the optional Q and A. So, who is running at-large? Lynn Harris lives in Silver Spring and is a current at-large board member and Board Vice President, who was first elected in 2020. She is a former MCPS teacher, a former attorney and a previous president of the Montgomery County Council of Parent-Teacher Associations, MCCPTA. Harris runs a student internship program to get students involved at the school board and with advocacy. According to her website, her priorities are "inclusive and affirming schools where everyone feels safe, welcome and valued, open data, structures of accountability and true engagement." Sharif Hadiah is a former Montgomery County police officer. The Latinsville resident ran in the Democratic primary for Montgomery County Council District 7 in 2022, coming in fifth and receiving 8% of the vote. According to Hadiah's campaign website, his priorities include focusing on academic achievement, parent involvement, fiscal responsibility, mental health and safe learning environments. Melissa Kim, who lives in Bethesda, is a senior advisor at the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. She has been a middle school principal for the District of Columbia Public Schools and then for the next four years, she was the Deputy Chancellor for DCPS. She does not have a campaign website as of the time of this presentation. Jonathan Long lives in Germantown. He is the Director of Operations at a credit union and he does not have previous political experience. As of today, Long has a website address, but there is no information on the website. Rita Montoya lives in Silver Spring, has two children attending MCPS and is the PTA president. and is the PTA president at North Chevy Chase Elementary School. She is a small business and nonprofit advisor, lawyer, and former juvenile public defender. According to her website, her priorities are to, quote, "rebuild trust in MCPS, provide culturally competent, clear and timely information to all MCPS families, and establish programs tailored to meet all students where they are and to move them forward." Fitzgerald Mofo. Mofo is a legal personal assistant at the international law firm of Bakwe Mofo in Silver Spring. The Brookville resident was a community liaison to the Maryland General Assembly and a campaign manager for State Senator Greg Zucker from District Fourteen. According to Mofo's campaign website, his priorities include closing the achievement gap, accountability and transparency, wage parity, welling political polarization, and prioritizing vocational learning and extended learning. And now to discuss the candidates running for the District Two seat, I'll hand it off to DeeDee.
Thanks, David. So there are five candidates running for District Two. Brenda Diaz lives in Gaithersburg and is a former MCPS high school social studies teacher. She now works as a social studies teacher for an online private school called Fusion Global Academy. She's also the founder and director of a farm and forest program for homeschooled elementary school-aged children called The Heart of Joy Learning. According to her website, her priorities are, quote, "rebuild the foundation of academic excellence, prioritize safety, boost morale among teachers, ensure responsible resource allocation through diligent oversight, respect and encourage parental involvement, and revitalize community engagement." Ricky Faimui works as a management consultant at consulting firm Accenture and is a U.S. Navy veteran. Mui, who lives in Rockville, ran unsuccessfully for Rockville City Council in 2023. He was appointed in 2022 to the City of Rockville's Human Services Advisory Commission. According to his campaign website, he aims to, quote, "mend the poor administrative performance of the school system." Rebecca Smundrowski is serving her third term representing District Two after being elected in 2012. She's chair of the Board's Policy Management Committee. The Gaithersburg resident previously served on the Montgomery County Council of PTAs or MCCPTA, the MCCPTA Board of Directors, and was a legislative aide for former State Senator Roger Mano. Her candidate website has not been updated since her 2020 school board run. Abby Chioye lives in Derwood and immigrated to the U.S. from Senegal in 2003. She works as a clinical research coordinator at the National Institutes of Health and is a mother of five children. According to her website, Chioye's priorities are, quote, "governance, academics, the role of parents, and school safety." The fifth candidate is Natalie Zimmerman. According to MOCO 360, Zimmerman lives in Rockville and has taught in MCPS since 2019. She's currently a second-grade teacher at Wheaton Woods Elementary School. She's a member of Montgomery County Education Association, the union representing MCPS educators. According to her website, her priorities are to, quote, "increase transparency, focus on data-driven practices, and support diversity and inclusivity across MCPS." Now to tell you about the candidates for District Four, I'll pass it to Joe.
Joe, sorry, can you unmute yourself one more time?
Shebra Evans, who lives in Silver Spring, has served two one-year terms as board president since she was first elected to the Board of Ed in 2016. She is a financial analyst in the cable and energy industry and is the mother of a current MCPS student and an MCPS graduate. Before joining the Board of Ed, she held several leadership roles with MCCPTA. She does not have an active candidate website at this time. Bethany Mandel is a writer and commentator and is a contributor to Deseret News. She is the co-author of a book called Stolen Youth: How Radicals Are Erasing Innocence and Indoctrinating a Generation, which was published in 2023. She lives in Silver Spring and according to her campaign website, she is a homeschooling mother of six children, three of whom are school-aged. She also shares on her website that her priorities are, quote, "merit in test scores, safety, responsible financial stewardship, climate of MCPS, and school choice." Laura Stewart lives in Silver Spring, is the vice president for advocacy for the Free State PTA, which is a state-level branch of the National PTA, and the former MCCPTA vice president for advocacy. She's an MCPS parent and previously worked in telecommunications. She is the former president of the Montgomery County Women's Democratic Club. According to her website, her priorities are accountability, collaboration, and transparency. That was a lot of information. Let's all take a deep breath together as we take it all in. Now we're going to talk about what we do with this information between now and the election. I'll turn it over to Anna.
Thank you so much for all of that information. My name is Anna Levy. I use she/her pronouns. I live in North Bethesda in County District Four and I'm a member of the JUFJ Montgomery County Leadership Council and co-chair of the statewide Labor, Economic, and Housing Justice Platform Team. I hope that you're inspired to take action to ensure that our Board of Education reflects your values. Here are three actions you can take. Stay informed. It can be hard to find media coverage of our local elections, so we are providing a list of local media resources. MOCO 360 has the most comprehensive coverage of local elections, including a number of articles about the Board of Education races. If you like podcasts, check out I Hate Politics, which many JUFJers have found very helpful in learning about local politics. Also, interviews with many Board of Education candidates have been released in recent weeks. The Montgomery County Community Media is Montgomery County's public media outlet, which produces both video and print content. All of this information is on the JUFJ website on our 2024 Elections Resources page and we're going to put a link for that in the chat now. As we mentioned before, there are a number of helpful questionnaires, which are all linked in the resources page on the JUFJ website. The League of Women Voters questionnaire includes questions on mental health, candidates' position on an opt-out for LGBTQ plus inclusive curriculum, and attracting and retaining teachers. The Metro DCP Flag questionnaire focuses on LGBTQ plus rights and inclusion. And blogger Adam Pagnucos questionnaire includes the MCPS budget and the role of police in schools. MOCO 360 questionnaire includes links to each candidate's social media accounts, which can be especially helpful for candidates who don't have websites. Also on the JUFJ Resources page are the articles we referenced earlier that give more background about the issues facing the Board of Ed and links to the recordings from recent candidate forums. If you have questions about the candidates' positions that aren't answered in the questionnaires or candidates' forums, we encourage you to reach out to the candidates directly through their social media or the contact information on their websites. Action two. Vote. We can't say it enough. There is so much at stake in the primary elections and every vote matters. We're going to review some key dates and details about voting in Montgomery County. Early voting is Thursday, May 2nd to Thursday, May 9th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. each day. You can go to any of the 14 early voting sites. There's a link with a list and a map on the Resources page. You can also register to vote at any of the early voting sites. As you can see on the slide, you have until May 7th to request a mail-in ballot by mail, until May 10th to request a mail-in ballot online, and until Election Day to request a mail-in ballot in person at a local Board of Elections office. In Maryland, any registered voter can vote by mail without a specific reason. If you requested a mail-in ballot already, you should have received it. Your mail-in ballot needs to be mailed or put in an election drop box by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. The sooner you return it, the sooner it can be counted. And this is all leading up to Primary Election Day, which is on Tuesday, May 14th, when the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Also on the Resource page are links to find information about your voter registration and your primary day polling place. Let us know if there's something you are looking for that you don't see on the Resource page so that we can help. Action three. Talk to your friends and neighbors about voting in the primary. We hope that you're inspired today not just to vote, but also to share the information about the primary and why it matters with other people in your life. We know that every vote counts. Remember, County Executive Mark Elrich won the primary by 77 votes in 2018 and only 32 votes in 2022. We hope that you will share the resources from this presentation with people in your network. Let us know if you plan to do so in the feedback form, which we are putting in the chat right now. And now Mara will close us out.
While everyone fills out the feedback form, I want to thank you for being here today. We are thrilled for opportunities like this to come together and to take action. If you asked a question that we haven't answered, please feel free to stay on Zoom after we conclude for the optional Q and A. And thank you so much for filling out the feedback form. It is really helpful to us as we work to make this presentation as useful as possible. To close, we have one thought to share. JUFJers are often seen wearing our blue shirts with one of our favorite teachings on the back. Comes from Per Kavot, Ethics of the Sages, and it says, "It is not on you to finish the work, but you can't quit it either." "We can't complete the work in any one election cycle, but we can't sit them out." "Each election is important. There's too much at stake to sit this one out." So go out and vote in the primary. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon. This concludes the formal program. We're going to stop the recording now and we invite you to stay on for the next 15 or so minutes for an additional Q and A on the materials covered.